Good evening, everybody. I want to call to order that Thursday I covered 22nd Citrus Heights City Council meeting. So those of you who can, if you would join me in standing and holding the flag.
The United States of America.
Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have the roll call, Amy, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. Thank you. You read the video statement?
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, October 26th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14.
All right. Approval of the agenda, I'm going to assume approval unless somebody speaks up. Not that I'm trying to avoid a vote, but I'm trying to avoid a vote, a roll call vote. Unless somebody speaks up, I'm going to move forward with the agenda as is. Okay. Presentations, Amy, first one.
Next item, presentation number four, a presentation on the annual holiday referral program.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I'm Tiffany Campbell. I'm the Support Services Supervisor for the Citrus Heights Police Department, proudly representing our department as well as our holiday referral program. So in just a moment, I'm going to screen share with you and present to you our 12th annual holiday referral program. Before I do so, I want to say thank you to Mayor Slowey and Vice Mayor Miller and all council members Bruins, Daniels, and Middleton, as well as Senator Boyd, Chief Lawrence, and our executive staff, Commanders Russo and Turcot. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you our holiday referral program. Thank you very much. It's my great honor to present to you our 12th annual holiday referral program. Things are just now getting underway. We're happy to report that we will be celebrating this year slightly different with our COVID-19 pandemic, however not to fear that we are still going to be spreading some holiday cheer. What we have with our holiday program, of course, could not be possible without the great community partnerships that we receive within our city of Citrus Heights. We're proud to say that we have the Sunrise Marketplace, again, the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, the Citrus Heights, as well as our Seroptimus Group, our Sunrise Mall, Citrus Heights Collaborative, and our Sayonara Center. To say the least, this program would not be possible without the community's support, and we are just very proud of the relationships that we've built in our community that is willing to help us with such a great project in order to bring those deserving families within our city just a little bit of help during a time of need. So we have some highlights for you this year that we'd like to bring to your attention. We are always thinking about, in our city of Citrus Heights, about enhancing our community partnerships, and we're proud to announce that we have found a way to include a third language in our application process, so applicants will be able to apply in English, Spanish, and Russian. So we're very proud of that new addition. Also, I mentioned COVID-19, and of course, we're all learning new ways to conduct our business here in the city, and it's no different for this program. So what we have done this year in order to keep everyone as safe as possible is we're offering online admissions, so people can complete applications through our website, and I'll be sharing with you the dates in just a moment. But they can be submitted by referral online, either email or just regular mail if someone chooses to do so. So again, I mentioned we have the application available in three languages. This year, our holiday referral location is going to be the same as last, at the Sunrise Mall, which is hosted by the Sunrise Marketplace. Because of their square footage, the 8,000-square-foot facility that we used last year, that is really going to help us be successful with this program during COVID. It's going to allow for social distancing while still having our community be able to spread that holiday cheer. So again, it might look a little different as we work through the logistics, but just be aware that we are definitely planning for a great season. We are thinking perhaps that appointments might be necessary instead of just everybody coming at one time for their gift pickup. But again, just be aware that your department, your community, is working through this pandemic to figure out the best way that we can all work together and continue our business moving forward. Without the joint partnerships, again, as I said, we're very grateful, and we realize that without our community's support that this process would not be possible. So what our time looks like is, this is a phased program. We are operating in three phases. Right now, we are in our first phase in the month of October, which is the logistics and the planning and making certain that everything's ready to go in a virtual world, as well as spreading the message. I am doing presentations such like this to all of our service clubs that are willing to have me as I can share the information. So that's phase one, and we're nearing the end. Phase two is our, when our program gets off the ground. So beginning Monday, November 2nd, communities members will be able to complete applications online for folks they want to refer, so please spread the word. And we will accept those applications for a period of about two weeks, and then we move to just before the Thanksgiving holiday is when we'll be begin accepting our toys and our food donations, and those may be by appointment at this time, just dependent upon where we are in the pandemic. And then towards the end of the month is when adoptees and adopters can expect to receive a notification, which will be done through an email process. If someone, of course, doesn't have an email, that's not a problem. We'll definitely be making phone contact and ensuring that the families are connected. And then moving to the, to the big day, please save the date for Thursday, December 17th. That's the day that we intend for our gift pickup and our deliveries to happen. And our deliveries might look a little different, but more to follow on that. We are definitely thinking that if, if it had to be virtual, we'll be sure to have a link so that everybody can be included in some capacity, but more to fall on that as we go forward. So just sharing with you how everybody's hard work pays off, and when we come together, it's amazing what this community does. What you can see right here is just some basic stats for 2019, where we've adopted 21 families, which was comprised of 35 adults and 62 children just this last year. We had an amazing amount of community support. We had over 75 generous donors. That's made up of local businesses, community members, volunteers, our neighborhood associations, our local service clubs, our city employees, and just so many people. Honestly, we even have some anonymous donors that do help us with this program. So again, our gratitude is much for, for what you do for us. The meals and toys, this is just one of the favorite highlights. So this past year, we were able to deliver, again, which is an annual thing, several toys, and down here in this picture, you can see where it's our Sayonara Center, and those children received 40 additional, excuse me, they received 40 meals. And even though we're in a COVID environment this year, and it may not be the sit-down, hot meal type of situation, we're certainly hoping that we can coordinate with a community member to where maybe it's a to-go meal. So again, we're really looking forward to that. Overall, one thing I'd like to announce is that for the ease in communication, please note holidayreferral@citrusheights.net. That is a dedicated email for which you can share with your friends, colleagues, family members. That could be your email if you have questions, if you would like to get involved, if you have perhaps a family in need that you'd like to refer, and for whatever reason you need our assistance to help complete the application, please just reach out and let us know. This year, I will be managing the program. Again, I'm Tiffany Campbell, and that will be under the direction of Commander Turcot. And we're very excited to announce that we have a dedicated program assistant. Her name is Teresa Dawn. So when you send an email to holidayreferral@citrusheights.net, you'll likely receive a response from Teresa Dawn. So she'll be coordinating and handling all of our logistics. So with that, if there were any questions, I'd be happy to answer any that you may have. But again, thank you for letting me be involved, and thank you so much for all that you do for us to make this program possible. You can guarantee that we'll be working with our community, excuse me, our city communications team to ensure that our message goes out to everybody in our community through newsletters, social media, Facebook, and all the sorts. Again, November 2nd is when you can expect to find this information on our website, both at the city and at our police department. So thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Tiffany. Appreciate it. You know, this is always one of the highlights of the year. It's a great program. It's always great to participate, go out and see the smiles on everybody's faces. Yes, it might be slightly different this year because of COVID, but still, the end result is, I know people are going to be generous, and this organization, the city as a group with all the various organizations is definitely going to make some parents and children happy. So thanks for willing to take it on again. It's a lot of work, but appreciate it. Any questions of council for Tiffany? All right. Thanks again, Tiffany, and good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for having me.
Next item, Amy.
So our next item is presentation number five, capital improvements projects update.
Welcome, Regina.
Good evening. Can you see the screen?
I can see all 23 slides, yeah.
I will try to keep it as brief as possible.
I'm just giving you a, we had a conversation about this earlier, so just giving her a hard time.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council for allowing me to present to you this evening. The intent of this is to give an update on our capital improvement projects. Typically, we do come to council during the budget season annually. However, with this being our first two-year budget cycle, we thought it might be appropriate to give you a little bit of update as we head into the mid-year of this current fiscal year. So without further ado, let's see. Just a quick overview, I will provide some information on some projects recently completed, ones that we completed here in 2020 to date, both planning and construction. We also have some projects that are in the works currently under construction, or we anticipate to be under construction by the end of this fiscal. And then projects on the horizon, these are projects that have either recently been awarded grants, they are conceptual, or in the early planning stages. So for projects recently completed, we have our 2019-2020 residential resurfacing project. This project began construction in the fall of 2019. We accepted it as complete this past June, and this total, project total cost was just over 1.5 million. We utilized SB1 road maintenance rehab account funds, as well as gas tax and Measure A maintenance as appropriate for this type of a project. The project resurfaced 13 local streets totaling approximately two miles of roadway. It also constructed 56 ADA compliant curb access ramps, as well as miscellaneous concrete and drainage repairs. We also finished up our Mariposa Avenue Safe Routes to School project. This was on Mariposa along the east side from East Gate to North Ridge. We had construction started in May of 2019. We have a total of about 1.7 million for construction. The total project was just over 2.2 million with preliminary engineering, environmental. We were fortunate that we did not have any right-of-way acquisitions for this project, but about 2.2 through construction. It was a SACOG grant, Measure A funds for our bike ped and local traffic control safety project money, as well as SB1 LPP. This is the local partnership funds that we received through the Sacramento Transportation Authority for being a self-help county. And then also TDA, which is Transportation Development Act funds, roadway impact funds, and local stormwater utility funds. So some of these projects, we have to put together quite a few different funding sources to be able to get these projects to work. The project constructed sidewalk infill, new drainage facilities, streetlights, ADA ramps, full road resurfacing, and of course, new bike lanes. And we have our Old Auburn Complete Streets Plan. This was a grant-funded project, $190,000 Caltrans grant through Sustainable Communities. The plan was presented to and approved by city council this past March. Subsequent to then, staff submitted a grant application for ATP, which is Active Transportation Funding Funds, for a total of $9.9 million. The total project is estimated at about 13 million, so we will have to forecast in the near future on how we might be able to fill that gap. If awarded, design may start as early as 2022, 2023. And then projects in the works, we have our Carriage Drive and Loppi Lane Safe Schools Corridor Plan. This is another Sustainable Communities grant-funded project of $196,000. The difference between the actual grant and the total project of about 223 is funded by staff in lieu. We like to be creative in lieu of coming up with actual matching cash. We leverage our staff time. So staff will be presenting a final plan to council this December for final approval, and once adopted, it will allow the city to leverage for competitive grant programs to be able to implement this plan as approved. Multimodal Transportation and Safety Plan, or MMTSP, this is another grant-funded project through Caltrans Sustainable Communities. Study session is scheduled for this November, and staff intends on presenting to council for final approval in December. The plan will provide for a transparent prioritization process for neighborhood traffic calming requests. This is kind of a more robust program of what we've had in the past through just our Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, and it will result in significant local traffic safety investments in the near future. We also have our Local Roadway Safety Plan, LRSP. This is a very data-driven plan, another grant project through Caltrans. It's actually a requirement that for future H-SIP or Highway Safety Improvement Program grant cycles, we will be required to have an adopted plan in order to compete. The consultant contract was awarded just last council meeting, and the plan is expected to be completed for council approval in 2021. We have our Benita Drainage Improvements Project. This is set for construction hopefully this spring of 2021. The total project is estimated at $1.3 million, fully funded by stormwater utility funds, and the project will install approximately 2,400 lineal feet of new storm drain pipe, as well as new inlets and manholes. We have our 2020 ADA and Drainage Improvements Project currently under construction. We began construction in this past August. Total project estimated based upon contract award is about $833,000, funded by stormwater utility funds, our Community Development Block Grant Funds, because they are, work is being done within target areas, as well as eligible work on curb access ramps. And we also are utilizing SB1 LPP, local partnership funds. We are reconstructing deficient ADA ramps, relocating conflicting storm drain facilities, and this project work is preparation for our 2020-2021 residential resurfacing project. We try to be strategic and accomplish as much concrete and drainage work as possible in advance of our residential resurfacing projects. Then we have our various signalized intersection safety improvements project. It is currently out for a rebid. This project was bid earlier in the year, but due to unfavorable bids received, we decided to make some modifications in engineering, place the project back out to bid within the last couple of weeks. Total project is estimated at about $1 million, funded by an H-SIP grant, as well as CDBG and Measure A funds. This project will include upgrades at 30 signalized intersections throughout the community. Will also include ADA curb access ramp improvements, countdown pedestrian indicators, and a pedestrian median barrier fence along three approaches over here at Greenback and Auburn intersection. We have our Greenback Lane Complete Streets Project. It is currently under design, and we are planning for construction to begin in late spring. Preliminary project estimate is about 1.8, but I will emphasize this is very preliminary. This project came to fruition very quickly this last spring as we were approached by the Sacramento Transportation Authority, indicating they had an allocation of $600,000 in Measure A funds to provide us with specifically for Greenback. So we are in kind of a fast pace to get this project designed and ready for construction. We hope to have better estimates within the coming weeks as we progress with some of the preliminary design. The project will be funded again by Measure A capital, as well as gas tax, stormwater utility, and roadway impact fee funds. This project will reconstruct ADA curb ramps and portions of damaged sidewalk medians, provide traffic signal upgrades, storm drain modifications, pedestrian enhancements, and full road resurfacing. The project will encompass the entire Greenback-Far Oaks intersection, as we are working with county for this location. Will also encompass the majority of the Sunrise and Far Oaks, or Sunrise and Greenback intersection as well. Then we have our Mariposa Avenue Safe Routes Phase Four. This is a grant-funded project as well. We received $2 million in Active Transportation Grant Funds. Project environmental design and right-of-way has been complete, and pending CTC, which is the California Transportation Commission, pending their approval to go ahead and resume with construction. Staff will be advertising and scheduling construction for this next spring. The total project estimate for construction only is at about 1.5, and again, will be funded by the ATP grant, as well as local matching funds from Measure A. Project will construct sidewalk infill and pedestrian upgrades from Skycrest Elementary to Madison Avenue. Then we have our Electric Greenway Trail Project. This is another grant-funded project. The total grant was 6.2 million in ATP funds. Total project estimate just for construction is at 5.8 million, and we will be utilizing ATP, Measure A, bike ped safety funds, as well as contributions from Orangeville Park District for the full construction. Project will construct approximately 2.9 miles of multi-use trail through Citrus Heights and Orangeville. All right-of-way has been complete, and presently, it is under final design with construction typically set for 2021, and currently, the trail naming campaign efforts are underway. We have our Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets. This is for improvements along Auburn Boulevard from Rush Park to the north city limits. Contract for final design was awarded in March of 2020 to Bennett Engineering. The project team is currently working on public engagement schedule for input on features and possible gateway treatments to the boulevard. Total project estimated for construction, including CM, or Construction Management Services, and all the inspections and testings that come with that, is at about 20 million. SACOG grant funds, smud, and local funds will help contribute towards this project, and the project will underground all overhead utilities, reconstruct new sidewalks, ADA ramps, medians, new signalized intersection up at the north end to provide connectivity between the east and west side shopping centers, and will also provide enhanced storm drain facilities, lighting, landscape, and bicycle and pedestrian upgrades. And we have our county shared projects. As council may recall, staff came to you in April as part of our annual SB1 implementation approval. Every year, we have to come to you indicating how we plan on spending our SB1 funds, and at that time, we had advised that we will be partnering with Sacramento County to resurface portions of Madison Avenue and Wachtel. Unfortunately, due to COVID and concerns of decreased revenues, the county decided to put that project on hold and submit for grant application to the state for additional SB1 LPP funds. They expect to hear from the state this December, and from there, they will confirm their schedule, but we are hoping for construction next May. The total project is over 5.2 million. However, the city's contribution, based upon actual quantities, not just square area of the improved areas that are within our jurisdiction, our city contribution would be approximately 1.5, and we have budgeted those funds out of our SB1 funds. Now finally, for projects on the horizon, we have the Gary Oak Drainage Improvements Project. This is kind of a small drainage project. However, it was not included in the initial CIP from two years ago since it just came to fruition in about the last six months. Design is in progress. Construction tentatively planned for spring of 2021. We have a total project estimate of 500,000, again, coming from stormwater utility funds, and this is a localized flooding issue, so project will install about 100 lineal feet of new storm drain pipe within a side yard drainage easement. We have our 2020-2021 residential street resurfacing project is under preliminary design, includes 13 streets as approved by council. Again, back in April of 2019, we get approval about a year in advance before, in this case, it'd be two years, before we anticipate spending our SB1 funds. It's locally funded, again, by SB1 for 1.6 million. Project may expand to additional streets if we do have any additional funding that we are able to identify, and then all concrete and stormwater improvements completed with the current 2020 ADA drainage project that's under construction right now. And then we have our San Juan Avenue Complete Streets Project. This is another grant-funded project of 2 million from SACOG under the State of Good Repair Grant Program from 2019. The total project is 3.3 estimated, however, we only received 2 million, and we had expected to receive 2.8. So we will be working on potentially modifying our scope if we are not able to identify additional funding to fill that gap. The segment is funded from Madison to Spicer for environmental, however, construction only up until Test Line. So again, we will be looking for additional funds. Staff is working on preparing the request for authorization to submit to Caltrans to begin the design process. Construction is tentatively set for 2023. Again, funds pending, as well as right-of-way, as there is some minor right-of-way acquisition needed for this project. And that concludes my update, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great job, Regina. I think one thing that probably most folks in the public don't understand, you know, like slide two or three, it showed the streets, we did 13 streets for 1.5 million. The next batch is 13 streets for 1.6 million. I mean, that's about $118,000, $119,000 a street. It's expensive stuff, and to me, it's just more important for people to vote this year and vote appropriately on Measure A. So.
Questions? Request, actually, of Regina?
Yes, sir.
I was going to report on the STA meeting from last Wednesday, and I hate to put you on the spot. I was going to talk about the, oh, the set of principles for the allocation of the remaining capital improvement program, and since you were part of the professional advisory group and explained it to me really well, could you give us the Reader's Digest version of what the board approved Wednesday?
So as we've discussed in the past, the existing Measure A through the Sacramento Transportation Authority for capital projects is not fully funded. The measure extends through 2039, however, recent discoveries within the last couple of years have identified that we will not be able to fund all the projects as indicated, unfortunately, due to debt service payments that are required from the measure. With that, it has definitely substantially cut the Citrus Heights allocation, because those allocations were based upon anticipated revenues, and counties or cities who came in first were able to receive funds ahead of time, and now the rest of the agencies, unfortunately, are having to pay for that. So having said that, the principles are based upon distributions of funds for certain programs, so whether it's arterial types of programs or projects versus freeway congestion projects. And so there is a slight balance issue that we're running into, where a lot of the projects that were front-loaded at the beginning of the measure were more local streets or arterial projects, complete streets, versus highway safety, or excuse me, highway congestion relief. And so Caltrans is really trying to push to make sure that they get their fair share as well, to be able to fund their congestion relief projects, just like intersection safety or interconnection projects. Additional principles that they're looking at are making sure that certain agencies like Citrus Heights are made as whole as possible, because we are one of the last cities on there, small cities under 100,000 that have not been made whole by our funding. So they are really pushing to maximize the amount of distribution that we receive through the remainder of the measure.
Right, and that's anticipated to be about $9 million for the rest of the program?
It's about 9 million, but we will also have access to possibly an additional million dollars under a separate grant, or a separate pot of money that they keep restricted, that we are able to use as matching dollars for community design projects that are awarded through SACOG. So for instance, we might be able to leverage some of those funds that we've already received for Auburn Boulevard through the community design, and be able to access those matching funds separately from the STA.
Thank you for staying on top of this. I know we're running a little short on what we thought we'd get through the Measure A allocations, but... allocations, but something's better than nothing. Hopefully, we can get in ahead. Is there anything we can do as a council to make sure that we get ahead of the City of Sacramento and the connector and Caltrans and the County of Sacramento?
I would say we definitely need to maintain consistency with our communications to the STA and continue to push for, even if it's just small distributions of funds, that we can get our projects shovel-ready so that we may leverage ourselves to be competitive for grants that come available. That's probably one of the most important things for us.
Well, no, you'll keep your eye on it. You do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Regina, for tap dancing and being called on the spot there. Good job.
You did a great job.
Any other questions for Regina? All right, thanks again for the time. You did excellent on your 23 slides, so thank you for that. Next item, Amy.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
All right, we'll start with Jeannie Bruins. You're on mute. Still on mute.
There you go.
Thank you.
My apologies. So Regional San Mets last week were meeting on average about once a month now instead of twice a month, like we've historically done. We got a presentation on how the sanitation district has engaged in the whole COVID-19 pandemic by doing sampling and testing of wastewater. Researchers have detected a concentration of the virus that causes COVID in wastewater, and they use that information to estimate the number of active cases in an area. So that's one of the indicators that is used in COVID testing. We continue to get upgrade, reports and updates on the Echo Water Project down on Elk Grove. And we've seen some movement in some of our senior staff that have longevity, and we've had some retirements, including a man that I've known for a long time, Ruben, who ran the plant and went on a trip with me and several other people to, Ruben Robles, to study how Australia and New Zealand did wastewater after 20 years of drought, which dramatically caused the sanitation district years ago to change their methodology and to save multiple millions of dollars over this time. And then Pal met this week or last week, and we are going to be doing a reverse Trump or Treat on the 29th, which is two days before Halloween, from 5:00 to 7:00. So bring out your children and your families. I dropped off some candy today to the police department. They are accepting candy contributions from anybody and everybody. You can never have too much, and they've got some really surprising things that they're going to offer that night with some of the police. The vehicles are going to be highly decorated. You're going to see some characters, so it's a good night to be out with the family. And then I just wanted to applaud our staff, Mayor Slowey, our city manager, and our police chief on the excellent state-of-the-city address that you executed this week on Tuesday night. It was a great use of technology and is a really good example of making lemonade out of lemons since we're all stuck in a virtual world still. And as a result, reached an unprecedented number of people beyond what the past face-to-face meetings have done. So kudos to all of you, and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. I would echo that to Megan and Nicole. They did a fantastic job organizing that. Brett.
Thank you. No report. Just two things real quick. You can now go inside places, so I just want to encourage people to get out and enjoy our restaurants and stuff like that. We've got a lot of road to recover, and our businesses need your help. And so get out, please support them. I went for my wonderful breakfast at Rosie's this morning, so get on over there if you can and tip your helpers, your servers, a little more generous than usual so they can get back with their lives, too. And then the final thing I just want to say is here comes Halloween. Be safe, but I want to encourage people to get out and let kids be kids. But take some extra precautions and be careful. And let's not lose everything along the way or so many things like we have been. Get out and celebrate and just be careful. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Portia.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Miller?
Well, since you heard from Regina, I don't have to talk for a long time. I was at the STA meeting last Wednesday, and the board did agree to the, or had a consensus on the remaining allocations for the capital improvement program. And to build off Brett's comments, Nan and I went up to Truckee this weekend, got out and did some stargazing and watching meteor showers. But when we went to the restaurants, what we found, and I wanted to say, be patient. They're still understaffed, and everybody's coming out. We had a great time going out to dinner and everything like that. They messed up the order. You've just got to have patience because they just didn't expect this many people so soon. But it was nice to be out. I don't think Nan has been out since March, other than maybe run to the store. But so it felt really good to go for a drive and get up to the mountains.
Thanks, Steve. All right, not a lot from my end. The library board did meet today. The good news is, starting November 5th, we will be looking at reopening libraries. Not all of them, but the Sylvan Oaks Library is one of them. The issue there is also being used as a vote center. So we've told the county that they have to come in on the 4th, the day after the election, and remove their equipment. And if that's the case, that'll give the staff 24 hours to get ready to open it. Hopefully, the 5th might be the 6th, but the good news is the libraries are starting to reopen, so be able to use the computers and the resources that are there. Lastly, the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito District is continuing to send out messages that infected mosquitoes are being found in Carmichael, West Sacramento, et cetera. So just remember when you're outside, because it's still warm, take the necessary precautions. And then when it does start to rain, just make sure you empty that standing water. So with that, conclude that and move on to the next item, Amy.
Next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or in any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. And then when you're called upon, I will allow you to speak so you can unmute your device. At this time, I do not have any written comments, and I do not see any raised hands.
All righty. All right, next item would be consent calendar, items 6, 7, and 8. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move consent.
Second.
So we have Bruins moving. Bruins moves the item, and Middleton, second. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. All right, item carries. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number nine. The subject is Final Allocation of Federal 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds and Action Plan. The recommendation is to hear any public testimony on the plan and to adopt a resolution approving the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and authorizing the city manager to execute all contracts necessary to implement the plan.
Okay, this is the second time through, so.
Yes, correct. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Slowey, council. Stephanie Cotter, Community Development Department. As you mentioned, this is the final allocation. This is the final action plan, so this would be, your acceptance of this plan would be the final allocation of CDPG funds for the 2021 program year. And the action plan outlines all of the approved activities. Our estimated award for 2021 is 600,000, which leaves 15% for public services. We leave some for planning administration and 390,000 for capital projects. You're aware, we always do the required citizen participation. As you mentioned, we brought the draft plan at the last city council meeting, and this is the required public hearing to adopt the final plan. On the screen now are all of the proposed public service activities. We received eight applications. The first two were new applications. You can see the 2021 CDPG request in the first column. And then the next column involved are the 2021 funding recommendations in the final plan. I just want to point out one change that we made from the last presentation. Councilmember Bruins requested that any remaining public service funding be allocated to the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry up to the maximum amount they requested of 22,000 or the maximum amount available. So we did include that in the final action plan. Does anyone have any questions on the funding allocations before I move on?
Nope, they haven't changed since last time.
Great, nope, they have not. Okay, so then the remaining part of the funding is capital, and we are recommending the entire amount of capital funding, 390,000, be allocated to the General Services Department for citywide accessibility improvements. And with that, I will turn it over to you for the public hearing, and the recommendation is available on the screen.
All right, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Amy, did we receive any written requests on these items?
No, I did not receive any written requests.
And I don't see any hands raised out there from folks, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And the pleasure, what's the pleasure of the council?
So I. Go ahead.
Thank you. Real quick, Stephanie, can you go back to the slide with the distribution amounts? Yeah. The home safety modifications, were we going to include that in the capital?
So this one, thank you for bringing that up. This one, we didn't include in here because we are releasing an RFP for capital with capital funds, and we thought that would be a better fit for this activity. So they are planning to apply under the capital program.
Okay.
For the current program year for 2020.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, with that having been explained, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution for the 2021 CDPG Action Plan and authorize the city manager or his designated to apply for the funds and execute the necessary contracts to implement the funds.
Second.
Bruins moves the item. Middleton seconds it. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller. And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Steve, I take it that was an aye? Okay, it was kind of a squiggly comment there, so I just wanted to make sure you were on board.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. All right, item passes. Next item, Amy, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item 10. The subject is Amendment to Chapter 94, Article 3, Division 2, Section 106 of the Municipal Code to Include Updates to Speed Limits. The recommendation is to introduce read-by-title-only and waive the first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 94 of the Municipal Code related to speed zones.
Great.
Good evening, council. I'm going to share my screen here.
Good evening, Leslie.
Hopefully, you guys can see the speed limit presentation now?
It's there.
Awesome, okay. Good evening, Mayor Slowey, members of the council. I'm Leslie Blimquist with the General Services Department. With me tonight is Sergeant Gualco from the Citrus Heights Police Department, and we have a brief presentation on the topic of speed zones and speed enforcement. So to get us started, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Gualco to discuss the enforcement.
Thank you, Leslie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'd like to discuss with you traffic enforcement and specifically speed enforcement in Citrus Heights. The goal of traffic efforts is to improve safety on roadways through education, engineering, and enforcement. The number-one collision factor that we see in the city is unsafe speed. Speed enforcement currently accounts for approximately 71% of all moving violations, and this excludes our photo-red light enforcement. We write approximately, on average, the police department writes about 5,000 citations a year, and 71% of them are speed or moving violations. So when we're enforcing speed, LiDAR is the most effective form of speed enforcement. LiDAR allows for pinpoint accuracy, and it's specific to a vehicle that we're looking to target. It can be utilized in all traffic conditions, including high-volume roadways such as, you know, Greenback Lane with multiple lanes. So to use LiDAR, it requires a valid engineering and traffic survey, which we call an EAE and TS, to avoid speed trap situation. So what is a speed trap? The California Vehicle Code defines what a speed trap is in 4802. And essentially, in order for law enforcement to use radar or LiDAR, the speed limits have to be set, and they have to be justified by the engineering and traffic survey within five years. So that, so we can set those speed limits, and then we can use the LiDAR or radar on those particular sets of roadway. So there are exemptions to this. Doesn't apply in residential streets or school zones. And then, real, to talk briefly about other options, which would be pacing, this doesn't apply to law enforcement vehicles pacing cars for speed. So it's just for radar and LiDAR.
Thanks, Sergeant Gualco. So currently, in order to certify an engineering and traffic survey, which is the basis for establishing speed limits, the surveys must be prepared in compliance with various sections of California code and regulations. The California Vehicle Code requires that surveys be prepared in compliance with guidelines set forth by the state. California has several documents setting forth the requirements, including both the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the MUTCD, and the California Manual for Setting Speed Limits. Our surveys must follow these rules and guidelines in order to be enforceable using LiDAR and upheld in court. The MUTCD and the Vehicle Code require that a posted speed limit be established at or near the 85th percentile speed. This speed can then be reduced by 5 miles per hour if justified by certain roadway conditions such as crash history or the presence of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Studies have shown that setting the speed limit too high or too low can increase collisions. Speed limits set near the 85th percentile speed of free-flowing traffic has shown less variance in vehicle speeds on the roadway. So a bit more about the 85th percentile speed and what it is. It is the speed at which 85% of all drivers are traveling at or below. In order to determine the 85th percentile speed, we measure the free-flowing speed of vehicles as they travel on the roadways. The data collected must be the uninfluenced speed. We have to use unmarked cars. The collected speeds cannot be influenced by anything other than roadway geometry. We cannot collect speeds of vehicles if they're influenced by traveling buses or trucks, the presence of law enforcement, or even the perception of the presence of law enforcement. We cannot collect during construction or lane closures or during rain or other inclement weather. Engineering and traffic surveys have been conducted for many roadway segments throughout this city. They were performed in accordance with the requirements set forth in the Vehicle Code, the MUTCD, and standard traffic engineering practices. We've been hearing a lot about unsafe driving behavior since the pandemic started, as there's less vehicles on the roadway, but all the data for tonight's recommendations were collected pre-COVID under normal conditions. Based on the data collected, five speed zones have been identified in need of an updated posted speed limit, and they include Antelope Road between I-80 and Auburn Boulevard, Antelope Road between Auburn Boulevard and Sunrise Boulevard, Fountain Square Drive between Greenback Lane and Stock Ranch Road, Old Auburn Road between Far Oaks Boulevard and the northeasterly city limits, and Sunrise Boulevard between Antelope Road and the northern city limits at Roseville. The three speed zones located on Antelope and Sunrise have existing posted speed limits of 40 miles per hour. The data collected indicated an 85th percentile speeds ranging from 40 The data collected indicated an eighty-fifth percentile speeds ranging from forty-nine to fifty-one miles per hour on these roadways. And so therefore, staff is recommending the increase of the posted speed limit from forty to forty-five miles per hour on these three roadway segments. Old Auburn Road is currently posted at thirty-five miles per hour, and the eighty-fifth percentile speed was measured at forty-three miles per hour. On this roadway segment, we are recommending to increase the speed limit to forty. And on Fountain Square Drive, the posted speed limit is thirty, and the eighty-fifth percentile speed was measured at thirty miles per hour. However, this roadway has a significantly higher-than-typical collision rate, and therefore, we're recommending to reduce the speed limit by five miles per hour down to twenty-five. On the screen now is a map of Citrus Heights. The roadways in yellow are the speed zones under consideration tonight for updates. The existing speed limits are shown in black next to each segment. And this map shows the proposed speed limit updates. Staff's recommendation is to adjust the posted speed limits based on the engineering and traffic surveys, which are based on current regulations and requirements. This will allow for a robust and effective speed enforcement program, essentially making sure we have all the tools in our toolbox to address speeding and traffic safety on our roadways. And that leads us to tonight's ordinance update and staff recommendation. Staff recommends that the city council introduce read-by-title-only and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter ninety-four of the municipal code related to speed zones. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one, real quick. On the Stock Ranch Road, the section, it looks like you just, are you just changing the part that is near City Hall, and will the other part remain at thirty, or is it already at twenty-five?
The recommendation is to change the entire road of Fountain Square from Greenback all the way up to the Roundabout, so in front of the entrance to Sam's, the police department post office, and all the way up to the residential neighborhoods.
Okay. I thought that, maybe I'm not thinking this right, I thought that was Fountain Square Road.
It is, that's Fountain Square from Greenback up to Stock Ranch.
Oh, just, so, okay, but you're just calling it Stock Ranch in this, okay. So on the accident side, do you know, you said this was also a result of a larger amount of accidents. Were those accidents occurring more so at the Roundabout, do you know?
We have not had very many collisions at the Roundabout. The ones most recently are, were in front of City Hall, there was one in front of the post office, and around those areas are where the primary number were located.
Okay, and so I'm gathering that the primary factor then, for the most part, has been speed in those accidents.
Correct.
Yeah, it just, I mean, it just, wow. I don't see that road as being difficult to maneuver at thirty miles an hour, and I'm wondering if it's just another factor, I don't know, who knows? But okay, that was my only other question, and then I just wanted to make a comment about raising these speed limits, I think that's very reasonable, especially when you look at those eighty-fifth percentiles. These roads are very well-maintained, they're wider, they're pretty much, you know, not so much residential near the roadway itself, and so I think this is actually a good thing and a very logical thing for us to do. I think these roads, if not all of them, at least most of that area, was probably at those speeds previously, and I think we've reduced them since we've became a city. And I might be wrong on that, but it seems like those roads used to be a little faster on the speed limit, but I think these are good changes.
Any other questions or comments for Leslie or Sergeant Gualco? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'd move the items.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Miller moves, Middleton seconds, roll call Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Item carries, great. Next item.
Our next item is department reports, number eleven. The subject is update on the regional housing needs assessment process by the Community Development Department.
Thank you, Mayor Slowey and council, Casey Kemp and our planning manager, can you guys all hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, well, just want to give you an update of what's coming forward for the housing element, which is coming forward this next year. Probably have all been familiar with the housing element, but it's coming, and just want to do a refresher and kind of let you know where we're at at this point. So we're going to talk about what is the housing element, review the accomplishments of things that we've done in this last housing element cycle, talk about some of the housing element components, and then last but not least, talk about the regional housing needs So what is a housing element? You know, we have a general plan, and there's seven mandatory elements that must be required as part of that general plan, and this is the one element that is required to be reviewed and approved by the state. So really, it focuses on providing the variety of housing types to a variety of people with special needs, ranging from affordable housing to market rate and everything in between, and it really is meant to dial into housing needs at our local level. And again, it's the one element that requires state certification. So why do we update it? Well, we update it because we want to make sure the policies are still relevant and our needs of our community are being met. Many of the grant funding opportunities that we apply for, whether it's roads or planning relay grants, you have to have a state-certified housing element, so it's really important to get this updated every eight years. And it's really the policy document that we look at for consistency in our housing programs as we implement different projects. So every eight years, so we are getting on cycle, we are currently wrapping up our twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-one cycle, and we're just getting ready to plan for and start our twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine cycle, which is what we'll be bringing forward to you soon. So we have had a fair amount of accomplishments. We have amended the zoning code to ease restrictions on housing in several locations. We created a small lot housing ordinance, which will be taking, will allow subdivisions of smaller properties in multifamily zones and lieu of apartments, so that's a different approach. And actually, our first project using that ordinance is going to the Planning Commission next week. We have the Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan, which obviously is focused on making the Sunrise Mall a great place to visit again and a whole dynamic community, but a big part of that will be housing, so it's got a big housing component there. Of course, the new Sylvan property, our rental housing inspection program is really a key program at preserving our existing housing stock and making sure that those homes that rented are maintained and kept, so they can be preserved well in the future. We have a great mobile home repair program. And then most recently, we updated our general plan, so we can allow residential units in the general commercial zone. So we've been busy planning for more housing. We've also seen a lot of developments, you have all reviewed most of these. Mitchell Farms or Mitchell Village now is two hundred and sixty new homes right in the heart of the Sunrise marketplace. Smaller lots, easier lots to maintain, walking distance from all the amenities that the marketplace offers. Five-five-five Mariposa, which was approved many, many years ago, now known as Abbey's Gate, if you've driven by there recently, the model homes are under construction and getting really close to being out there. Sunrise Point, we all heard the good news that that had been funded by the state, and that is getting ready to move forward to provide forty-six affordable homes for those at risk. Bear Pot Towns Homes is another one at Sylvan Corners, and then Fair Oaks Senior Housing was recently submitted for building for a hundred and ten affordable units there on Fair Oaks Boulevard south of Greenback. So got a lot of housing going on, and it's exciting to see some of these projects move forward. We are not without challenges in the housing world. As a city, we have a lack of land, we're ninety-eight percent built out, so that means everything we do is a little bit harder and a little bit more challenging to find our input projects. And COVID has been challenging, but it also has one positive, I'll talk about momentarily, and then another challenge we have is the state law requiring us to change how we look at our traffic analysis, that's called SB seven forty-three. So more to come on that in the future, it will be a little bit challenging for us to move forward. But that's, there were a lot of opportunities. The state had passed a sweeping housing law this past year, and really a lot of that focused on a variety of things, but what helps us is ADUs, accessory going units that are a lot easier to put throughout the city, and that helps us meet our housing goals as well. And interest rates are still really low, so that helps folks afford more than they may So some of the major components that we have, we have the needs assessment, so that's where you look at what the community needs in terms of housing for special needs, or what affordability levels and things like that. We also look at growth needs, which is the RENA process, which I'll talk about more here in a minute, and then our special needs groups that are listed here. And we also look at how did we do in our past performance of the housing element. So when we come back to you early next year, we'll have a kind of critique of how we've done and what we need to change. So one of the biggest components is, of the housing element, is the vacant land inventory, and the purpose of the vacant land inventory is to ensure you have land available to meet your RENA obligations. It also serves as a tool, as a marketing tool, you can hand this out to developers that are looking to develop in the city and say, hey, this is where our vacant land is, this is what we expect it could develop at. So it's, it's got two purposes, really. So we, we update this regularly, and we're updating it again right now for twenty twenty-one. Again, we do review the past housing element to make sure we've been doing good, and an example of this is the last housing element, we had a policy related to foreclosure crisis because that, we were just coming out of the mortgage meltdown, and so now we're not really having this foreclosure problem, so that policy may get modified or changed as part of this process because it's not really as well that anymore. And of course, we as a state continue to grow, and the county continues to grow, so we need to plan accordingly for that growth. So the way that works is through a process called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and that's a process where the state estimates the population growth for the entire state. And there's a process where they divvy that up between all the regional planning organizations, in our case, it's SECOG, and then SECOG is tasked with coming up with a methodology to fairly distribute that between all its member agencies. And then each city is then required to take their number and demonstrate that they can accommodate that within their city. Now, this doesn't mean that we're obligated to build any units, not obligated to approve any units, all it means is that we have to show that we have adequate land to support the number of units that they assign to us. So this is our breakdown of our fair share of RENA allocation, so just about seven hundred units that range in affordability levels. So you can see the biggest chunk that we get, and SECOG tries to keep regional parity, so it's kind of roughly equal in the number of affordable units across the region, so we have a bigger chunk of above moderate units this year than previous years, and less low and very low units. The good news is, and this is where the one good news of COVID comes in, is there has been a little bit of a delay in some of our projects moving forward, and the good news is that we can use those projects to count towards our RENA obligations. So we, you can see here on the list, Mitchell Farms, and we've talked with KB and the developers, and they think that about a hundred and eighty-five of their units will be constructed after the cutoff date, which is next May, so we can count all those units towards our inventory. Both Fair Oaks Senior Housing, or Senior Affordable Apartments and Sunrise Point are deed-restricted units, which mean they are restricted to low or very low, so they help us meet those numbers. The Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan, while that plan shows up to twelve hundred units, we're assuming only four hundred for the purposes of the housing element. And then last, on RENA allocation, how we're planning to meet that is our ADUs. So we typically see anywhere from six to ten ADUs a year, so we're, and we're seeing that ramp up, so we're assuming over the next eight years, we would see about a hundred of those, and that helps to meet our goals, and it's consistent with the changes in state law to really incentivize those. And we have some programs planned to help also educate folks about that and really promote that. So between that, all those units, we have eight hundred and thirty-nine units available in our vacant land inventory. But then also, we have, due to some of the state law changes, we are what's calling banking units, and those are units that aren't really counted to RENA, but if something were to happen, we have those in the bank that we could, we could do things. For example, when we rezone properties, if it doesn't, if you lose those units, you have to replace those units, so this gives a little bit of cushion if that's something were to happen on one of those lines. So our tentative schedule, we've been busy working kind of in the background, updating the data, what's changed in the last eight years for our demographics, and we're working on finishing that up. Next week, we're going to have our Facebook Live session and talk about the future of housing in Citrus Heights. We have a flash vote that's going to be released, as well as a survey monkey. And then we're shooting to get this to the Planning Commission in December, following by the January council meeting, and then we ship it off to HCD, who has three months to review it. At that point, everything, if everything looks okay, they give it back to us, say, okay, now your council can go adopt it, and then at that time, we would come to you in about April and ask you to adopt it, and we'd be done for the next eight years. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question, Casey?
I guess, comment.
Let, let Steve go ahead and ask his question first.
You mentioned removing foreclosures from the plan. We're a little concerned that once this virus thing's over and the restrictions on foreclosures and evictions is done, that we may have an issue that we need to deal with. Has there been any thought towards that?
We, we, I guess I shouldn't say we are going to strike it, it's, it may change the verbiage a little bit, so they, the state requires you to review and analyze and modify any policies that aren't relevant or need to be modified to become more relevant. So certainly something we can look at in that language is to, is to, you know, plan ahead for COVID and potential impacts on foreclosures.
Yeah, thank you very much, and a good report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Brad, Jeannie.
No, just a comment, first of all, thanks for a job well done. I know, having gone through this a few times now with you and your department, there's a lot of work involved in this, and I'm sure you're glad you only have to do it every eight years, but thank you for, for everything, and we'll look forward to the final report.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Casey, appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Next item, Amy.
Next item is city manager items.
Yes, council, just a couple of things. As a couple of the council members mentioned earlier in the evening, this week, we hosted Citrus Heights' first-ever virtual State of the City, where we, we reviewed our years so far, highlighted stories of resilience from our community and our vision for the future. So we really urge members of the community who were not able to tune in, the State of the City is on our homepage on our website, or you can go specifically to citrusheights.net/sotc. So we hope, we hope everyone has a chance to check it out. From time to time, I like to give just a brief COVID dashboard update, I'd like to do that briefly. I think as most know, the state of California is in a tiered, color-coded system to more clearly designate where a county is in the process of reopening. As of September twenty-ninth, SAC County has progressed one level higher to the red tier, and then since October eighth, the last council meeting, Citrus Heights deaths have increased from fifteen to nineteen. So total confirmed cases in SAC County is about twenty-five thousand, a little over a thousand of those are in Citrus Heights. Total deaths in Sacramento County is four hundred and eighty, and nineteen of those are confirmed in Citrus Heights. So I did meet with Dr. Casiri, the county health officer, this morning to discuss, you know, where we are and what's, what's happening. She did want me to urge all residents to do their part, to try and turn the county orange before Halloween, that's the goal. They're not sure if that's going to be able to happen, but in order for SAC County to make the orange tier three, she wanted to pass on that every person, you know, needs to do their part by continuing to wear a face mask covering in the public, continuing to observe social distancing guidelines, maintain good hygiene, and do not gather with non-household members indoors. Unfortunately, hospitalizations in Sacramento County have increased slightly in the last couple of weeks. increased slightly in the last couple of weeks. The county's positivity rate already measures in the orange category, but our case rate is four-point-four percent in a hundred thousand, which is above the four percent required threshold for orange. Once both of these measurements meet the required threshold for two weeks, then the county can be upgraded to orange. So we anticipate transferring to the orange category during the winter. That can be possible if they can control some recent outbreaks in long-term care facilities. When that happens, it really, really messes with the, with the numbers. So the county also anticipates a widespread distribution of vaccine that could be available to general public in March or April. And I talked to Dr. Casiri about this for a bit. You know, it does, it does appear that a vaccine is imminent. It could hit, you know, direct ship certain key locations as early as November, but then, distribution priority will become what, what that will be all about. So it's anticipated they'll start with, you know, healthcare workers, hospitals, the high vulnerable communities, like long-term care facilities, seniors. By the, by the time it would make its way to the general public, it could be well to the spring, is Dr. Casiri's best estimate right now. And she did qualify by saying it's, none of this is really clear yet, but I was encouraged by what she seemed to know about pending vaccines arriving in the area. So just to sum up, the following indoor uses are now allowed with modifications. All retail with maximum fifty percent capacity, gyms and fitness centers, maximum ten percent capacity, hair salons and barber shops, movie theaters with a maximum twenty-five percent capacity or a hundred people, whichever is fewer, museums, zoos, aquariums, nail salons, personal care services, places of worship, maximum twenty-five percent or a hundred people, whichever is fewer, professional sports without live audiences, restaurants, maximum twenty-five percent or a hundred people, whichever is fewer. And then, Sacramento County is recommending only members of a household should eat together in a restaurant. And then, shopping malls, destination centers, excluding food courts and common areas, maximum fifty percent capacity. So activities that are still not allowed indoors are family entertainment centers, card rooms, interesting, they specifically call that out, and bars. So that's, in the red category, that's where we are. So that's why everyone's really looking forward to see the county can't move to this orange category, because that list I just gave you will lighten up quite a bit. So that's what I have to report at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bowade. Appreciate it. Got to get those bars open. All right, next item.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything from the council?
Nope, not for me.
All right. Is that, cover it, Amy. Is that nothing else?
That's all.
All right. Well, since there's nothing else to talk about, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting of October twenty-second. Thank you for your time tonight, folks. Bye.